Also, I would ask everyone to silence their cell phones and other devices during the meeting if they would. Three, recognition of guests and special presentation. Do we have any special guest or special presentations? I guess not. Okay. All right. Item four, public comment. We have anybody signed up for a public comment? Okay, all right. We'll move on to item five, which is consent agenda. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action related to payment of accounts, bills, invoices, payroll, requests for reimbursement, requests for other payments, transfer of funds, and amendments. Under five point one is our bills for the month. I've looked over them. I don't think I've found anything that needs to question.
I make a motion that we approve paying our bills in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred two dollars and four cents.
And the motion by Commissioner Domu to pay our bills in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and two dollars and four cents. And the motion by Commissioner Domu to pay our bills in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and two dollars and four cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Thornton. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Five point two is district credit card bills. I think most of those were in line that I saw and couldn't think of any questions I had. Did I entertain a motion on five point two to pay the credit card bill?
I'll make a motion when we pay the district credit card bills of eighteen thousand, six thirty-nine dot oh one.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Thornton. We pay the district credit card bills in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and one cent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Five point three is our contract payments. Southern Link, Reliant, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, our contract payments. You'll notice there is one large payment in there to Motorola for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's our yearly payment for the lease purchase on the radios. So outside of that, I don't think there was any, anything. And of course, there's a large disbursement to the tax office and I believe that's it. Maybe election did. We didn't have our elections on this one. That's what, that's what the Smith County Tax Office is for. Sending out the parcels and collection of parcels, but we didn't have anything for the elections office this time, did we? Okay, all right.
But no, it's on, it's on there.
Is it? Did I miss it?
Thirty-seven thousand.
Oh, okay. I missed it. I'm sorry. That's right above it.
Next one is the tax.
Yeah, next one's a tax one. Okay, I skipped over it. I'm sorry. All right.
I'll make a motion. We approve our contract payments in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Have a motion by Commissioner Domu. We make our contract payments in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thornton. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Five point four is for board information only. It's benefit payments. In the board meeting on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the board authorized District staff to pay ongoing benefit premiums up to twenty percent increase as reflected below at the due dates and report activity is consistent. Agenda items at the board meeting the following month. So our Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Health and Dental benefits come to a total of ninety thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy, ninety thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, which falls within the, the parameters of what we set. So I'd entertain a motion that we.
It's for information.
It's information. Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. Hmm, okay. Item six, there are no minutes. We're a little bit behind on those, so we'll just skip that. Item six.
I'll say it's not the administration. It's actually the review that's behind it. So I'll give review, take care of it.
Okay, all right. Not a problem. We understand you've been on vacation and holidays too, so we'll get them caught up pretty quick. Item seven is executive director, executive director administrative and financial report. And before you do that, we'll note that our attorney, Mr. Hardy, has joined us and we appreciate that. So anyway, all right.
Okay, so I will touch upon a few highlights. You all have the written report in these three first meetings. The, the renewal of the terms for District Four and District One, Mr. Brown and Mr. Dominique, has been declared official and certified. And right now, the plan is to hold an official swearing-in ceremony in the general report meeting. The yearly report to the Texas Division of Emergency Management has been duly filed through S A D. They aggregates and then submits it. So that's been taken care of. Chief Greaser and Sherry, they've already started a new recruitment campaign. I assume we'll always have like rolling recruitment campaigns now over the next twelve months to keep up with all this. And they both can give more updates on that. The sales tax revenue collections look positive. I wish I could say that we're seeing a clear trend, but I'm not there yet. But so far, over the three months of October, November, December, collections are up at a total of about eight point six percent compared to what we had budgeted, which was an increase of two percent. So if this keeps up, that should alleviate a lot of revenue concerns we have. The Finance Department has concluded this pooling of the bank accounts and the cash balances. And we have, as a result, reduced the number of accounts that we have with regions. And because the sweep accounts that were associated with each of these accounts was a really pricey picture, we're actually managed to reduce the monthly bank fees of close to thirteen hundred dollars. The, we had an audit, RFQ sent out. We have received all the results for that. And in today's meeting, Keith Bean will review with the board what we recommend we proceed further with. And ultimately, is the auditor works for the board and reports to the board. So we need the board to formally approve with the open recommendation in order to move forward. And those were my highlights. And I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Eric on his report? Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight, your financial reports, November budget, actual, November net position, statement of activities, consolidated cash, and reports from regions and fidelity. Keith?
Okay, the board, I was gonna look at the November budget to actual for Fund One Hundred, which is now our consolidated cash, or what we're calling our consolidated cash. If you have it in front of you, as Eric mentioned, you were closing out or consolidating our various checking accounts into one account. So to do that, you gotta make some general entries in the general ledger. And so you may see some entries on here if you have questions about, for example, under transfer from general, there's a two million dollar entry there. That's us closing out the real property account to our operating account. So again, I can answer any questions if anyone had, has any questions about those. But you'll continue as we finalize all those consolidations. There will, again, be transfers, ins and outs. And if you have questions about them, I'm certainly available. And so we're in November, so we're, you know, two months into the year, so we're right at about seventeen percent. And as Eric mentioned, your sales taxes looking pretty good. Property tax really picked up in December. It's not reflected here, but it's truly picked up in December. Our salaries full-time are right at seventeen percent. As also, as Eric mentioned, you know, overtime is a little, there's a reason why overtime is where it's at, but they're keeping, or everyone's keeping an eye on that, but the.
Sorry, I'm back here for forty-five oh two, just missing time.
Oh, yes.
We're going on with that, our forecast for the year. So we, we, Chief Greaser, let's see if we can forecast what we think we make in the year. Get an idea of where that income might end up at.
Can do. And in fact, I think we've got another one coming.
We do.
I think the way the process is, is this income we received this year was, I think, probably for expenses that incurred many, many months ago. But yes, you're, you're right, sir. We will certainly exceed our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget of revenues.
So if they recognize them, we'll adjust to part of that.
Yes, sir. So again, we're right at about seventeen percent. If you look at vacation or holiday time. If you look a little further down on the first page on benefits, we've got the benefit retirement five zero zero two two. That looks high, one point eight million, but in November, on November fifth, we made a one point six million dollar contribution to the T C D R S. So that's reflected there.
Can I just add one thing too?
Yes, sir.
On the overtime, as we've mentioned over the past couple of board meetings, is that we were expecting overtime to come down quite dramatically once the new hires came aboard and were placed out where the shift assignment should be. And we have validated that assumption with the December, and December thirteenth and December twenty-seventh, they go. Overtime just plummeted down back to normal. So that assumption is no longer an assumption, it's a reality.
You know what the percentage is?
Percentage of overtime?
Is it ten, twelve, fifteen percent? What?
I don't know that yet.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Moving on, as y'all mentioned, the board elections, we got an invoice from, from those folks. We had budgeted thirty-five thousand, but their invoice came in at thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. And so that's why we have a two thousand dollar deficit in board elections. Other than that, there really wasn't too much on here. Other than, I did want to highlight that so the twenty, so we're looking at twenty, November twenty twenty-four, this budget reflects the twenty twenty-four purchase order rollover that was approved. It also includes the CAD amendment, which we dated back on eleven thirty. So our expenses right now are twenty-seven, approximately twenty-seven million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty thousand. So our budget really shouldn't change, expense budget, except mid-year, we'll probably bring back to the board another budget amendment to realign it once we have a stronger grasp on where we think the year is headed. So, but again, that's our consolidated cash budget, and I'm able, available to answer any questions if anyone has.
Anybody have any other questions? All right. We'll move on to item nine, discuss, consider, and take action on selecting a qualified external auditor for the district. So I know you mentioned putting out the RFQs. So Keith?
Yeah, I released an RFQ soliciting local CPA firms, audit firms to submit a proposal for our, our business, three-year term. Obviously, we only approve one year at a time. And squires submitted a proposal, and they are obviously qualified. They're our current auditor. And so what we've asked them to do is for, for this year, or for the year ended twenty twenty-four, to do the financial audit and then our compliance audit for our investment policy and then agree to proper procedure. So in their RFQ, they don't submit any pricing. The next step with the board's approval will be, we'll discuss pricing with them. I would suspect this year, we'll probably be in line with last year. Of course, there'll be an increase, I'm sure. But.
Right.
So we, again, we would just discuss the twenty twenty-four's pricing, and we would have some conversations about some additional services we're asking for twenty twenty-five, but we would just have conversations about it. We're not committing to anything or just trying to get a feel for what they're. We're not committing to anything, or just trying to get a feel for what they're gonna charge us, or potentially submit, or try to charge us for twenty twenty-five. Because again, we're trying to expand the scope a little bit for twenty twenty-five. So again, the goal is to meet with them on Monday and talk about pricing. If that's, if we have the board's approval, to proceed with that.
All you're asking us to do now is authorize you to proceed with negotiations on pricing. You'll bring that pricing back to us at the next meeting for formal approval.
Yes, sir, exactly.
While we get asked to do now, it does state that squires as our selected qualified auditor.
Yeah, and negotiate the price with it before we approve it. So I'll entertain a motion on that, if anybody wants to make it.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, as next squires, we've got the LLC as the selected qualified external auditor for our, for the district, and that the staff shall be authorized to proceed with the negotiations.
Have a motion second. So any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. All right, item ten, Director of Human Resources Report.
Okay, good evening. I hope my voice is okay, because I have a cold, so excuse that, please. On my HR report, I just wanted to point out a few things on it. Benjamin Smart was hired on December third as the part-time logistics technician, and from what I hear, is doing well. We are accepting applications, like Eric had said, for the firefighters and lieutenants. Currently, I have sixteen firefighter applications and five lieutenant applications, two of which are inside applicants. And then I wanted to point out UKG, you know, they've been supposedly working on the two twelve over twenty-eight day cycle for a year. They finally did come back and say they cannot make it work based, based upon the overtime weighted average. That's what the issue is. So that's not gonna work, we're gonna have to stay with the one oh six over the fourteen that we're currently doing. And if you have any other questions?
Is there anybody else that can do it?
Well, I'm, there are other vendors. I know of, I have talked to another vendor, Paylocity, and they assure me they can do it with the weighted average, and they have other fire departments working it. And, I mean, that's an option if you'd like me to pursue that. I know that we're under contract with UKG. How much longer is it, Larry? Like, four years?
They aligned. Yes, they aligned, that contract is actually directly with OpenGov, with UKG being the subcontractor.
Yeah, and it's four years still, isn't it? Yeah, so that would be the issue there, is the contract that we're under.
Yeah, I'm assuming that in there, we're gonna stay with the system that we have, but certainly would, would you have your eyes next time, get ready to Monday?
Yeah.
It was like-
Definitely.
Actually, just, hopefully this time they can demonstrate to us they can do it before we-
Yes, yeah, exactly. We're not making, we're not making any move until I know one hundred percent it can be done. And I will also talk to other departments to make sure that it really is working, yeah.
If the board will remember, this wasn't a product that we actually selected. We did not go through an evaluation, HR didn't really have a choice. This was, we contracted with OpenGov, and in the middle of our contract, they changed how they were dealing with it.
Yeah, yeah, one important point, maybe, maybe I just, the last time it was a commitment, they could do it, and we went with it and tried to get it done, right?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And this two twelve versus one twenty wasn't even an issue, it wasn't even up for discussion.
That's correct.
It wasn't a thing at all. Should I move on? Okay.
All right.
So workforce injuries, we did have two workforce injuries in December. One was a back injury, that they were actually released to come back December ninth without restrictions. And the other is a knee injury, and they are still currently out. I got a notice today that they will be out through January ninth at this point. I think when I did the report, it was December twenty-sixth, so now it's January ninth.
Actually, we have three.
We have three?
Keith, take, got hurt.
Yes, but he's not on the-
Well, I know, but still, he's-
Yeah, he is hurt.
He's not on, he's not full-time.
Right.
He's one of our volunteer chiefs, so he's still an injured.
But you are correct. Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Do I move on to the pay period change?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right. I am bringing to you today the proposal to change our pay period from Sunday through Saturday and moving it one day to Monday through Sunday. In doing this, it evens out the pay period, the hours in the pay period for the firefighters. Currently, over three pay period, over three pay periods, they get ninety-six hours, ninety-six hours, and a hundred and forty-four hours. If we change it by one day, they will get a hundred and twenty hours, a hundred and twenty hours, and ninety-six hours. Now, if we make this change, they will actually get ten hours fewer overtime. They will get ten fewer overtime hours, sorry.
Built-in overtime hours.
Yes, exactly. So in order for them not to be paid less, we would need to increase their hourly rate, if you all agree to it, by one point four percent, which on firefighter one is twenty-nine cents an hour, that we would raise it. And that would offset the fact that the overtime is coming down and that the regular time is going up. And so if you look at my chart that I gave you as far as the pay scale, they end up with the same amount of money annually on either plan. So they, they don't, they're not getting a real increase, they're staying the same. The other thing I wanted to point out was, this will impact the overtime outside of built-in. So when they pick up a shift outside of built-in, it will impact that sum. I figured out what we spent in overtime last year, how many hours we had. And if we did this one point four percent increase, it would increase those hours by eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine, so roughly twelve thousand dollars in a year. But remember, we have filled those twelve-hour positions that we did not have filled last year. So really, I don't anticipate it being this high. I think this would be worst-case scenario, that it would increase by that, but it really shouldn't, since we filled those. So I'm asking the board if you will approve the pay period change. The other thing I wanted to point out also was that it will not impact the hourly or salary employees for administration. It's just the operations that it will change.
I'm anxious, Eric, what prompted the review of the presentation?
We had someone come to us and request that we look at it, that they were working with another fire department, another city, and that they had found that if by changing this one day, it made a big impact as far as the, the pay. And that's been one of the hardships on the firefighting people, is that they're getting the ninety-six, ninety-six, and a hundred and forty-four, which doesn't sound bad, but budget-wise, it's really difficult for them to budget it. And so by spreading it out more evenly, it's just easier for them to do the one twenty, one twenty, and ninety-six.
I mean, had we been smart enough when we did this initial implementation of the one oh six over fourteen, we would have proposed this at that time.
Yes.
But we were not smart enough to figure out that rotating it one day would create this tremendous-
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen it before about the uneven-
That's difficult.
But it'd be twelve thousand less, anyway?
Yes.
That's in totality.
In totality, yes, over the year.
It, it is something that they would really like, to balance the checks to where they're not so disparate.
And the risk that we have is if we start running back into a lot of overtime again. But they've already done the capitalization based on last year, and I hope that's not going to be more than-
Yeah, you could think that was like a worst case almost, yeah.
We believe that it is.
It should be worst case, yes.
Yeah, we believe that that is the worst case.
Try it for ninety days and watch it, see what it does?
I, we probably ought to give it a little bit longer runtime, I seen that-
Six months?
Yeah, let's look at, let's give it runtime of six months and just report back to us if you've received and out of the ordinary, what you're forecasting to us. And so I don't anticipate that, you won't anticipate that anything does happen, but for whatever reason, it turns out that it is a larger financial burden than you may have agreed at this time.
Anybody else have any questions regarding that? I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the pay period change from Monday through Sunday, and change the pay rate to compensate for if you were booked in overtime hours beginning January sixth, twenty twenty-five, with a runtime of six months. We would ask that you report back to us any unordinary costs being incurred. And I'll leave it at that, address something.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Dominique, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries, okay?
Thank you.
All right. All right, item eleven, Community Outreach Coordinators Report. Ms. Nikki?
Good evening. Okay, so on social media, I have been here almost a year now, and looking at all of the numbers, we have increased our following on Facebook alone by more than two thousand people. So I, I feel like that's a, a great place to start, when our goal has been just really encouraging the community to know who Smith County EST Two is. And in addition to that, we're going through, I think this will be my third recruiting cycle, and, and kind of doing just some field work on what is it that firemen are looking for when they're looking at departments. Really, a lot of it has been in calls and culture. So when they're checking out departments, and we see a lot of this coming up, questioning our, our teams when they're in the hiring process, what kind of calls are you running? How much fire are you fighting? And what is it like being in Smith County? So received a lot of, of good feedback and insight on that. So that's kind of what we're focusing on. Not only are we hitting, hitting our traditional information as far as, you know, right now, we're going into the cold weather season. So we're really talking a lot about watering your Christmas tree, so that doesn't start a fire, watch out with your space heaters, anything that would be, that we would see an increase in this time of year, hitting all of those marks, of course, sharing, you know, a lot of that community outreach with all of our, our push-in ceremonies that we had this month, but really looking at how we're targeting individuals that we want to come and work here, who are eager to learn, and what it is that we have to offer them, not just, you know, hey, them getting the experience of working here. There's been a little bit of, of shift in that when we're looking at the job force these days is, it's not just so much like, hey, I wanna, I wanna go to wherever, you know, whoever will take me. It's also like, what can, what can we give them, how can we invest in them? So really, looking at that when we're sharing what we've got going on in our district, how we can train up these firemen and really push them to the next level. So we're still seeing that, we have a lot of engagement on our calls and our training posts, more so than, than most of any of our other posts that we're putting out there, so. But we'll, of course, we'll continue to partner with, you know, the National Fire Prevention Association and sharing some of those big nationwide campaigns as far as what's going on, safety tips, whether that be, you know, the times of years that we change our smoke alarms, or again, like, right now, when we're in cold weather season and we're, we're really paying attention to candles and space heaters. And then, of course, you'll see some statistics from our social media, what's, what's gaining a lot of attention the last, you know, thirty days, is kind of what I bring you every time I'm bringing those numbers.
We, any requests from anybody for CPR classes or anything like that?
You know, we had one the other day, followed up with them, but at the time, they did not follow back in with me. So they reached out about CPR classes. I said, give us a call, we'll be happy to schedule one. That meets, you know, your schedule, but didn't hear back from them. But we've been working with local churches, like I set up an evacuation planning the other day with the, the crew that would respond to that area. So when those calls come in, we certainly address them and make sure to get out there with our new website that we've got going on, which I, we, I've actually met with them this week, and we've been working on our timeline. Some of the things that I've talked to the training department have been things like, can we put up videos of CPR, get those, those basic things out there? And then, of course, begin inviting people in.
It wouldn't hurt, I would say, if you know there's a church that has a nursery, to reach out to them, because I know they have to have CPR for their nursery staff and all that other stuff. So I'd just check with them and say, hey, if you need something, we're here, can help you.
Yes, and I know a lot of our, our crews go out on big church events, like Fourth of July. So many churches these days have safety teams where they have, you know, members of their congregation who are paramedics, doctors, things like that. I think they're doing a lot of in-house training from some of the things that I've talked to, when I've talked to churches, but of course, things like evacuation plans, those are some things that we get to work on, so. But we'll, of course, we'll always be available.
Anybody else have any questions? Would that make you for a poll?
No, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Chief.
When you're being notified of this, you keep referring to the crews, or you also notify volunteer chiefs?
As far as-
Chiefs to let them know what's going on in their district.
What, what do you mean? Like, are you talking about with push-in ceremonies or-
You're planning on scheduling this inside of district?
It depends on the, the time and day.
Some of them don't have chiefs, so.
Right, yes, so it depends on the time and day. So usually what I do is, you know, for example, I'll talk about Winona. We had a church that was in that area. They, I was working back and forth with a nurse who was a member of the congregation. They wanted to work on an evacuation plan. So I do what's best for her time and schedule and, and their leadership team's time and schedule. So that's really the team at the station at that time. If, that's, I just kind of have to work with them.
You need to be notifying this volunteer, so they can be more aware of it.
So-
That doesn't conclude your notifying the volunteer, that chief as well?
So are you saying you want, if something comes in, how many cooks do you want in this kitchen? To, so that it gets organized and not overlooked, like with one, like, overscheduled?
I'm not asking for you to put too many cooks in the kitchen.
Right.
Asking for you to do is notify those chiefs-
Okay.
So that they know there's an activity going on, because sometimes they're not hearing from the day crews.
Okay, so most of the time, we've been putting it on the board, but if there's, you're wanting like, maybe a calendar or something to go out, or just to see, see on another email?
Just an email or something to get you to know something's going on in their districts, so they'll be aware.
Okay, we can do that.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, thank you, Nikki. Item twelve, Assistant Executive Director's Report on Support Services. Larry, you're, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioner. As normally, you'll have my report in front of you. I'm just gonna go over just a few things. First, I want to say that IT and Logistics is going to, starting in January, shift its hours and be open ten hours a day, five days a week, in an attempt to expand the hours and availability to our personnel, both paid and volunteer. We'll be doing this in lieu of our Saturdays. We have not seen a, a lot of adoption on the Saturday schedule. And so the thought is to, we, we, we have a lot of requests that come in for us to stay late during the week. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna split up the staff, and we'll still operate five days a week, but they'll be ten-hour days, and the staff will rotate on what days they're covering. So the staff will work the same amount of hours, there's no cost increase or decrease to the, to the district, just changing the way we're available.
Would you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Would you put that out in an email to all the chiefs?
Yes, sir.
The volunteer chiefs, so they understand that?
I'll, I'll put that out in an email to everybody.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Or just to everyone, or whatever, yeah.
I will point out some new metrics that's being reported. You'll see a new, a new dial on my report for facilities, fleet, logistics, and IT, talking about how often we're hitting our SLA target, and that's gonna be represented in a percentile now, make it easier to understand how we're hitting our targets. I am pretty happy with the targets that we're hitting within facilities and within IT. We've got some work to do, both on fleet and logistics still, but those are still improving. But I, I will point out that we expect over the next two to three months to see a decrease in productivity out of the shop while we work to fill a position. So I just want y'all to be aware that I anticipate seeing a, a decline in, in the total productivity over the next few months, and that it result in an increase in the backlog that we'll have to work back through.
And when you go down a man, that's to be expected a little bit.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, just want to point it out.
Overall, Larry, we did, did recognition is due to you and your team for the improvements that we've seen. When you started measuring how you're performing, and we've seen improvements in that performance on a whole going basis, congratulations to you, and thanks to your team.
Yes, it's definitely a team effort, and I appreciate all the people that's working hard to make sure it gets done. Thank you.
All right. Twelve point two, discuss considering taking action on purchasing new front and rear tires for White House brush one fifty-one at a cost of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Commissioners, these are kind of a standard repair here, the tires are worn and need to be replaced. This is contract provider.
Okay. All right. Make the motion to purchase new front and rear tires for White House brush one fifty-one at a cost of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dominy to purchase the new front and rear tires for White House brush one fifty-one from Southwestern, or Southern Tire Market at a cost of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents. Have a second.
Second. No, sorry.
Charles got here first. Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point three, discuss considering taking action on staff purchasing oil lubricants from Mansfield Service Partners at a cost of four thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Now, this is our bulk purchase, is that right, Larry?
Yes, sir, and this is a standard purchase about this time of year, we start running low on our bulk lubricants, and this is our contracted service provider.
Okay, all right. Did I entertain a motion on item twelve point three?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
That would move forward with four thousand seven ninety-four and sixty-one cents.
Okay, have a motion by the...
Mansfield Service Partners.
Yeah. Motion by Commissioner Wilson to authorize staff to purchase oil lubricants from our contracted vendor Mansfield Service Partners at a cost of four thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Dominy? Any other question or discussion? How long is that lasting, Larry?
I, I think that's generally about six to seven months.
Okay, this is six, six or seven months' worth of oil and lubricant.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point four, discuss considering taking action on repairing body damages on noonday support one sixty-six at a cost of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Commissioners, this will be something we file on insurance, we do have a five thousand dollar deductible, so there will still be a cost to the district. I want to say that at the time, this, this vehicle was in the accident, it was not noonday support one sixty-six, it was a, it was a loaner vehicle, and it was on a deployment when the damage occurred, and it was a hit-and-run accident. Be happy to answer any questions.
Was there ever a police report done on that?
Commissioners, the nature of the accident was running down the freeway, and a gooseneck trailer sideswiped into the, into the fast lane. The way we understand it, the, the trailer exited immediately off the exit, le- leaving our member in the fast lane unable to exit. Circled around, called, called law enforcement, called the sheriff's office, waited for over an hour, no return call, no, nobody came to the scene, and, and we're unable to locate the guy that, that sideswiped him, so we were really left high and dry. Pictures, statements, all that were taken, documented, Chief Strickland was, was the lead on the investigation.
Just as lo- just as long as we notified law enforcement, you know?
Yes, sir, we did.
I'll make a motion, we authorize staff to contract Keith Hodges Collision Center for the body repairs and purchase bumper from Amazon at a total cost of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents.
A motion by Commissioner Thornton to authorize staff to contact, contract with Keith Hodges Collision Center for the body repairs and purchase bumper from Amazon at a total cost of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point five, discuss considering taking action on the purchase of warehouse fixtures for Admin Building Four and... Larry, I guess you can tell us what that is?
Commissioners, this was a line item budgeted item, it is to install pallet racking in the new building there at Admin Four, it's going to run down one side and the rear of that building, and give us three to four levels, depending on where the pitch is at in the roof, of additional storage for bulk goods and, and spare equipment. Add the evaluation tabulation, and the results are included.
Make the motion, we authorize purchase of racking and shelves at a cost not to exceed six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents from AK Material Handling Systems, the D B A pallet rack now.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Dominy, authorize the purchase of racking and shelves at a cost not to exceed six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents from AK Material Handling Systems doing business as pallet rack now. Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point six, discuss considering taking action on replenishing uniform inventory. Authorize staff to purchase needing uniform items from Centos at a cost of thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Commissioners, we've had lots of inventory leave kind of in a group, and as a result of that, we haven't been able to replenish at the speed we normally would, resulting in the need to come for funding approval. What you have before you is a replenishment of standard stocked items, including no-mix pants, glassy shirts, cold weather shirts. I think it's a total of around seventy-one pants, probably close to sixty shirts, would be out of this purchase, and this is to restock inventory and be prepared for reissuance. And this was the low bid back when we did the original uniform order, and they've held the pricing.
All right.
I'll make the motion, we authorize staff to purchase needed uniform items from Centos at a cost of thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Dominy to authorize the staff to purchase needing uniform items from Centos at a cost of thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thornton. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point seven, discuss considering taking action on repairing the Cascade System at Winona Station One at a cost not to exceed four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Allow the staff to schedule August Industries LLC to repair the Cascade System.
Commissioners, this one's a long story, it's an old ticket. The short version of it is, our original vendor wanted a lot to repair the unit, we actually started investigating replacing the unit entirely, it is an older unit. This is not only the Cascade tanks, but also the compressor system that fills those tanks and the filtration system. And while we were investigating replacing the unit entirely, we also reached out to a few other vendors to try to get second opinions on the repair. Both the second opinions that we had came in a lot lower than the original contractor that we had lined up, and so we recommend moving forward with the low bid here of the forty-one thirty-eight seventy-seven.
They give you any kind of warranty on it?
They do, it's supposed to be ninety-day warranty, that's pretty standard across all of them. I know Winona V F D and the paid staff and our facilities team are eager to get this one closed off the books.
I'll make the motion, we schedule, staff to schedule August Industries LLC to repair Cascade System at Winona Station One. Can we fix the cost of that same four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents?
Okay, have a motion, a motion by Commissioner Dominy, allow the staff to schedule August Industries LLC to repair the Cascade System at one-on-one at a cost not to exceed four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Twelve point eight, discuss considering taking any necessary action on the purchase of a new high-capacity multifunction printer for the E S D two administrative offices at a cost not to exceed six thousand dollars. Authorize the staff to move forward with the purchase from the selected vendor.
Commissioners, if some of you will remember, a couple of years back, we brought up this funding request, we made a commitment to continue trying to operate the printer for as long as we could. We finally hit the spot where we can no longer obtain repair parts, and our evaluation still shows that purchases cheaper than the lease option, as we have technicians that are authorized to repair these products. In front of you, you have the evaluation tabulation, this being an I T request, we don't really have to do that, but we did look at different models and different vendors, and we recommend that you move forward with this. This is not a line item budgeted item, but will be within budget due to project savings on other completed projects.
Can I also point out that this is the main big printer in District One that everybody's using?
Did I entertain a motion?
Make a motion, authorize staff to move forward with purchase of the selected vendor at a cost not to exceed six thousand dollars for Admin Office High Capacity Multi-Function Printer.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Dominy to authorize the staff to move forward with the purchase from the selected vendor of a high-speed multifunction printer for the E S D two administrative office at a cost not to exceed six thousand dollars. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? The only thing I can say is, the one we've had is, seen its better day, I think it's been repaired as many times as it can, they, I don't even think they supported anymore, do they?
Those are the ones that we can't get parts.
Okay, right. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. All right, moving on. Item thirteen, Chief of Operations Report.
Good evening, Commissioners, you have my report before you, we've had a lot of good news and a lot of, of good activities over the last reporting period, and all three of the engines are now in service, and all the push-ins were done, we had a, a really nice event at noonday, a lot of, a lot of community, it was the first one I've done at night, and so that one was, was well attended, and it was some nice energy that was there that, that night, attended by, by quite a few people from the, from the, the region and from the, the community. Our fireboat has been delivered, and we were able to do training with the factory rep that was here from Oregon, very grateful that we did that, that training, learned a lot about the, the boat, its, its capacities, its, its capabilities, and really made some good strides on, on getting that boat ready to go in service. It's, it's currently up at fleet, it'll be getting radios, our eight-hundred megahertz radios put on, onboard, a few more things, get it on the insurance and, and things of that nature, so we'll, we'll be expecting invoice and payment on that here coming soon, but I'm proud to report that the, the boat was exceeded our expectations, its, its capacities and its capabilities on, on the water, had a, had a great couple of days of training. In addition to that, as you know, we were, we approved to move forward on the CAD project in our last meeting, not a whole lot to report, I'm waiting to get signatures from the county now, that'll require the county commissioners probably to come together, everybody's holiday schedule was a little bit disrupted during the last few weeks of the month, and we'll reconvene with Judge Franklin's office for, first part of the new year. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have, we've already talked about the recruiting class and, and where we're at with that, I'm happy answering any of your questions.
Any other questions anybody has for Chief? Okay, we'll move on to thirteen point two. Discuss, consider, unless you want to talk about your report, I'm sorry, personnel reports and breakdowns, if you can talk about that?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of those, any specifics.
So you, you've got one E S D volunteer from Troop, is that right?
That's correct.
Who, who is it?
That is Lamont.
Okay.
And he is, he is quite active for us.
Thirteen point two, discuss and consider taking any necessary action on entering into a six-month trial agreement with R W Recovery Consulting LLC to assist with the state and federal reimbursement process and conduct a cost-benefit analysis with the results to be presented to the board at the conclusion of the six-month term. Approve the agreement with R W Recovery Consultants to pursue reimbursements for state and federal reimbursements, and allow Chief Grezer to sign all related documents subject to the final legal review and approval of the agreement.
Commissioners, what you have before you is, is a request to enter into an agreement with a professional that has extensive experience in reimbursement, the reimbursement process with the state of Texas, that actually worked with the Texas Forestry Service and has accomplished millions of dollars' worth of T D M recovery efforts. In addition to that, some of the interstate, or the state-to-state mutual aid under, under E Mac and recoveries from those, this person has extensive experience in that, and is offering their services out to organizations like us to help recover the maximum allowed under the, the, under the law and the, and the policies adopted for maximum cost recovery. Currently, Chief Clanton's office is the, is the lead on this and, and spends a great deal of time, it will not eliminate all the time required of that. Sherry's office as well, as we, as we pull up all of the, the pay stubs associated with the deployment, to make sure that we have accurate pay, pay estimates, well, they're not estimates, they're actuals, to, you know, to provide to the state. They are extremely detailed on their audits that take place, to make sure that they're not overpaying or underpaying. So we get quite a bit of questions to be answered and to assure that, that our recovery is, is done as accurate as possible. This, this particular offering is for this, this person to assist us with those, that cost recovery, it does come at a cost. The state has most recently recognized that there's quite a bit of time that's, that's consumed in that administrative cost, and allowing a department like us to recover five percent of the totals, or bill that rather, as part of the cost recovery. This particular offering is, is to do one of those at, at five percent, and then moving forward at ten percent, so it would be a net, a net expense to the district of the potential for five percent. The question remains is, is, is there more recovery that's accomplished? Our recoveries, I would say, have been very good. Are they perfect? I can't, I can't sit here and tell you that, but I will tell you that in the last two years, we've recovered close to eight hundred thousand.
Can Mr. Brody just draw a graph?
Yes, sir.
If we can recover more, and then also the additional costs that would incur.
That's exactly.
And does offer some, free up some of the Chief Clanton's time?
Capacity. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm a little bit, it's working, it's boring, but you're missing a thing.
If it's just on trial basis, and we say it's working, we can continue, or we can...
Correct.
Cut it off.
If nothing else, we might learn that we're doing an excellent job.
Right. We may not need to, we may not need to hire him.
We've learned a bunch of new things.
Yep.
Chief, that's right.
Right. Well, I'd entertain a motion on, on that particular item.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement with R W Recovery Consulting LLC to pursue reimbursement for state and federal reimbursements, and allow Chief Grezer to sign it. state and federal reimbursements and allow Chief Grezer to sign all related documents subject to the final legal review and approval.
Okay, and is that for a period of six months?
For a period of six months.
Okay. All right, have a motion by Commissioner Thornton. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Dominy. Any other question or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay and that motion carries. All right. Thirteen point three, discuss, consider and take any necessary action on approval of funds for new hire and promotional testing and approved funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars for new hire and promotional testing for operations.
Yeah, Commissioners, Commissioners, this is just our standard request for the the cost associated with testing and promotions, so it's a pretty standard reoccurring cost as we go through a budget cycle.
I'd make a motion to approve about ten thousand dollars for new hire and promotional testing.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dominy?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. See any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say nay and that motion carries. Item thirteen point four, discuss, consider and take any necessary action on Transport One Twenty-Two project at a total cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Commissioners, what you have before you tonight is a what I would say a frugal project to try to maximize the return on on the previous investment into a tanker that was previously at ARP. This this chassis, this this apparatus, this truck only has about seven thousand miles on it. It is standard shift, that's the biggest downside to it, but it's pre-death and it has a lot of life in its its chassis for sure. It's also of the size and G B W capacity that it's perfect for carrying a plow dozer unit on on its piggyback. So what we've what we're proposing before you is is a a company, a third party, if you will, to lengthen the frame, to recycle the bed off of the current Transport One Twenty-Two that's up at Red Springs. They'll extend that and do all the mounting, that's all the driveline, all the brake lines, all the all the components that need to need to be done to to do that. You'll also see that in one of the one of the comparison pricing was from MAC to do that from from a dealer, which is actually a little bit more and less accomplishing, less work from that dealer. They also farm out to this company that 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 we're considering using and have proposed before you tonight. We believe that this is the the most frugal recycling of a truck. This truck was scheduled and slated for auction, but primarily because of of the the rotted tank and its utilization as as its its current platform as a as a water tender, if you will. In addition to that, this is very much like the the transport that we we bought used just a few months back. That one has been outfitted almost complete, not not quite, but almost. It's currently carrying a a dozer on the back of it and it is is serving us quite well already. This one would would accomplish that. As you can see, at less than forty thousand dollars, we'd be able to accomplish the the second transport. You'll also take note that the transport that that was carrying the dozer from Troop, One Forty-Six, that one was the tractor-trailer and that has been slated for auction. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Chief, the thirty-six thousand dollars, and then I'm looking at, and it includes, you've got an equipment list on here, that's pretty extensive. What are your questions on that? You, new plow tools, tires, graphics, everything, this is turnkey?
Yes, yes, sir. We've 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 rolled it all together for you and and be able to recycle that truck and make it for years to come.
And the savings that we realized from the old or from the previous transport, that this will both will come under budget, under budget?
Yeah, just as a point of reminder, this was one of the items that we had in the capital apparatus budget. So we we had about two hundred and twenty-five thousand that was slated for a purchase of a new unit. We've we've accomplished one of the other, the the used one that you know about, and now this one would still be well under budget.
For transport?
For for less than a hundred.
For less than the cost of water.
Less than a hundred.
Yep. Okay. Want to entertain a motion on that particular item?
Make a motion to approve the project total cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand seventeen dollars fifty-two cents and additionally authorize the limited tinder bed to be sold for scrap and place no transport. I'm going to read the VIN number out.
Yep.
Just a vehicle auction, authorize staff to sign the associated documents.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Dominy?
Second.
Yeah, second by Commissioner Arnold. I've got one question. The pump and everything that's on that truck, will we take that off and put it as a spare in case we need it or are we going to sell it?
Yeah, I I think it's all ready to be scrapped. I think that's we would we would either.
I didn't know if there was anything that was viable on that truck that could be used that we could put in in stock.
We'll we'll double check on all that, but the the plan is to remove it, then we'll bring it back and then we'll we'll figure out what's what's salvageable and what's scrap.
Okay, sounds good. All right. All right, any other question or discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay and that motion carries. All right, item fourteen, discuss, consider and take any necessary action on fire chiefs presenting and discussing issues with the board for future actions. ARP.
Chief Hickman. How are you this evening?
I'm good. I got, good evening. November, as far as calls for service goes, we were down almost fifty percent compared to the prior month. I think October, we were around sixty calls and then November, we were down to thirty. There were several days where I had to check my phone to make sure it was still working because it was probably five five or six days between calls at one point in time. We participated in the City of ARP Christmas Parade at the beginning of this month. We had a good turnout for it. As far as training goes, the young man that went to the Fire Academy last year, the dual credit Fire Academy, passed two of the four tests, came up a little short on two of the tests. He's been studying for several months. He just went back a couple of weeks ago, passed the final two tests, so now he's fully certified on the fire side. I have another young lady that was on our department for a few years, lacked a couple of classes to be certified, so we put her on inactive back in July. She recently finally finished her training and has her support certification, so we're looking at getting her reactivated. And then I have another guy that's on our department that's finishing up the Fire Academy. I think his, the state testing and skills will be done mid-January, so we'll have another fully certified firefighter. Any questions for me?
Chief Hickman, that would bring you up to item six, thank you.
Yes.
If you get the final certification.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Fuller, Chief Bradley?
Good afternoon. So here we are, four days left at the end of twenty twenty-four, so it's kind of just pulling our numbers for the year. Currently, we're sitting at eleven, I'm sorry, about eleven hundred and twenty-one calls for the year with another four days left. We, that's only about a one to two percent increase in calls over twenty twenty-three. However, our personnel hours for the year, we're going to end up at about seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine hours, which is a thirty-eight percent increase over twenty twenty-three. And so that's that's been contributed to, we did have, you know, kind of an ebb and then a flow of personnel throughout the year, but also the the staffing and rostering of apparatus throughout the year have been pretty successful, so. We have been active on social media and had a couple of, you know, marketed ads out for recruitment. Lots of feedback and interest in that. We expect to have maybe ten to a dozen interested applicants at the next meeting that are coming for more information, varying levels of experience and certifications, so we're kind of have to work our way through that. As far as internal certifications, we have another one that completed I S O, that another one that gained their T C F P advanced certification, and then we still have several in E M T, paramedic and Fire Academy, so. You have any other questions for me?
Chief, do you know the background of that one driver?
I did look it up. Turns out there was another M V A in that area just shortly before that where it was a young driver that denied transport, came and picked up by a parent, left the car on the side of the road and it was taped off and another passerby called it out again and it was confirmed through dispatch that it was the same vehicle and so they did not respond to the call of the car at the same time. Yes, sir.
Chapel Hill, Chief Peters?
We also had a, first time we had a slow month too as well, it's been slower than ever, I guess, for everybody. But we did do a parade in ARP as well and also we did the parade in the City of Tyler we did as well for us getting out to see people. Also had my, our banquet and then we, I honor three of our firefighters for their service for our department during our banquet. I did have Commissioner Brown came, so it was a good time for everybody. Training, I did have one guy finish his commission test and now he's got to do his, finish up on his medical side. He's got to take the final test for the medicals to where then he'll have his certification for non-the-one commission side. In-house, our training, this year month, we did, our last month, we had hose testing where we pulled the hose off the truck, tied it how it showed advance the best way and then put it back and load it back on the truck the correct way. And then I'm in the process also of adding a new member to the department as well.
What correction? Chief South?
Well, for us too, it was kind of slow. I didn't have anybody hit any certifications this go around. I don't have anybody in the pipeline for new. Hopefully before long, we'll have some coming up, but I've got one that's waiting to test on a certification, but I'm not going to say it till he gets it, so, but anyway, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I recognize you for, applaud your participation and thanks for presenting the report again. So we all give it a five, three?
Yeah, we're trying.
Yep. Noonday? Anybody here from noonday? White House, Chief Tate?
Give him a minute, he'll take a little while. Move it a little slower now.
He's moving better than I, last time I saw him.
Well, good evening. I want to start off by thanking E S D staff the night of my injury. Those of you that haven't heard, I took a pretty substantial fall from the White House tender on the eighth, landing on the concrete floor there at the station, was transported by EMS to the hospital. Strangely enough, everything that was hurting checked out fine and is not broken and I got ready to leave the hospital having almost completed the paperwork and stood up from the gurney and my right foot hurt and the doctor said, nah, let's get an X-ray and check that. Right foot's broken, I'm having surgery on the seventh, so that is the the fun that I had that night. Want to thank Chief Clanton and both of the on-duty battalion chiefs for coming to the hospital and checking on me. I appreciate it. I know that's kind of in their job, but I appreciate all of them coming up there. It was an experience. I've ridden in the back of an ambulance, no telling how many thousands of miles through my career. This is my first experience as a patient, so it was a little bit of a learning experience. Had had a really great experience overall with the care that I received that night. Onto the White House report. You have that there in front of you. I have two members that obtained their Wildland certification during the month. We still have numerous members enrolled in courses, so I set a goal when I became the chief of White House, everybody's always enrolled in some kind of training and we're still maintaining that. Firefighter One certification is a pretty lengthy certification and that's what a good number of them are currently enrolled in. Have one new member that joined the department during the month and we had two P R events that we did. One was a Halloween event actually that ran into November at the boulders at Lake Tyler and then the Five-Eleven store in Tyler had another event that they invited us to and then of course we had the push-in of our new engine. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Winona, Chief Allen?
As you can see, we've been pretty busy in Winona. We've got eighty calls total. We're proud to see that only fifteen of them was non-volunteer responded. That was a pretty big obstacle for us, man. It was nice to see that on this report. Currently got ten ready for Skills Day for Wildland firefighting. I've got two that just enrolled into Firefighter Two, so we're going to try to get that certification knocked out for them as well and, man, we just keep keep pressing forward, so.
Okay. Chief, I'll spread out to do, I mean, as far as the number of, if they should, if you're ready for, we'll do that.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Yep, thank you. All right. Item fifteen will be closed session. The board will convene in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one, five-five-one point zero-seven-two and five-five-one point zero-seven-four. No action shall be taken while the board is in closed session. Any final action, final decision or final vote shall be taken after the board reconvenes an open session and we are in closed session at seven-twelve. Would everyone please clear the room? Would everyone please clear the room?
Okay. Call this meeting back to order at nine thirty seven P M and move to item number sixteen point one. Discuss, consider and take any action on purchase of fuel tanks and associated equipment. Award the contract for the purchase of fuel tanks and associated equipment. Smith Tank and Equipment Company for competitive pricing, shorter delivery time and alignment with district needs is detailed in attached evaluation. So what do we need to do with that?
I think all we need is a motion. And I'll also make the motion that would award the contract for purchase of fuel tanks, associated equipment, Smith Tank and Equipment Company.
Have a second. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Seventeen, discuss, consider and take action on proposed service provider contracts following negotiations with the volunteer prior departments and take any other action regarding service provider contracts. So anyway, so what's your pleasure on that, gentlemen?
I would make the motion that we extend existing contact contract for forty five days while the attorney is making the adjustments to the contract. And bring it back to you and to the volunteers. And you have the authority to sign any documents.
Okay, and also the, uh, the-
What did I leave out of that?
The, yeah, I'd like to countersign the contract extension.
Extension, right. Okay, okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion?
I, I think that it's worth stating to those that are here today that after we did sit down and go through the, through the contract, there were some comments that the commissioners ourselves had to some of the, some of the items that were in there. And for sake of clarity and, and full disclosure to you, we want to make sure we get all those incorporated and then turn back over to you. Have those available to review before we actually take any further action. That's the reason we're asking for the twenty five day extension. Give us that time.
So when Mr. Hardy gets through making all the corrections, you'll get a copy of them. Right, okay. All right, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion besides what was there? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Item eighteen, remarks by presiding officer and/or board members, information updates, items to be placed on future agendas and future meeting dates and times and locations. Brent, do you have anything? Cheryl? Matt?
Thank you for being patient with me. I'll be better.
All right. Scotty, you have anything?
So, I'm sorry, I don't need to ask something. So we're gonna do next, next month's meeting on Monday, as we go back to our regular schedule?
Yeah, be on the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, okay.
Yep.
And it's gonna be here?
Here, as always. Yeah, unless, unless we can't get it.
Okay, right.
Yeah, right.
So, then I'm gonna ask Mr. Thornton, do you think that you're gonna be able to attend that meeting in person? Or do we need to look at, uh, special circumstances for you to allow you to join another way?
Uh, special circumstances.
So, and read, I won't bring it up, but no, I know we'll have everybody here with the section from Mr. Thornton. But if we can actually, uh, I believe that under open meeting act that we can actually use Zoom as long as we have a quorum physically present here, then you could actually join remotely and allow you to participate that way.
Yep, that'll be beneficial.
Would that be a problem for any, anybody else?
I don't have a problem with it, I just want our attorney to check it and make absolutely sure that it is true and legal. If you don't mind doing that.
We'll try to check it between now and then, but I think we're good.
Okay, just wanna make absolutely sure that there's documented somewhere that you can do that. So anyway, outside of that, that's all I have, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Somebody.
Okay, we, we are adjourned at nine forty two.